Okay, I'd like to call the City of Belvidere Committee of Whole Meeting of February 26, 2024 to order. I'll call the roll. Albertini?
Here.
Brereton?
Here.
Flurry?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
Gramkowski?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Mahal? Here. Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Ten present. Gina?
If you could call the roll for the commission, please.
Uh, Ganevun?
Here.
Ellie Monher?
Here.
William Bieber?
Here.
Paul Newman?
Here.
Bob Nitro?
Here.
Art Nevin?
Here.
Daniel Belfry?
Here.
And as those watching can tell from this, this is actually a joint meeting of the City of Belvidere Planning and Zoning Commission as well as the Committee of the Whole. You can also see the mayor's absent tonight, so it's incumbent upon the members of the Committee of the Whole only to appoint one of their own to be acting chair. As a motion to appoint an acting chair.
I nominate Marcia Friedman.
Motion by Alderman Snow. Second by Alderman Albertini. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm staying.
Alderman Freeman. Point of clarification, when you have these votes, are, is everyone participating in the votes? There will be no votes by the commission this evening. In fact, actually, once we finish with the first item on the committee of the whole agenda, the presentation by Hossel Levine, you're free to go at that point, so. Unless you want to stay.
Okay, let's see, we have some public comments registered. Ron Underwood? Would you come up?
My name is Ron Underwood. I live in Greenview Estates. I'm a Belvidere resident. And I got this letter in the mail the other day about the electrical aggregate program notice. I'm sure many of you got it. According to what I'm reading in my community, many people claim they haven't gotten it. They don't know what it's about and so on and so forth. But that's neither here or there. My point is, why should I have to opt out of a program I didn't sign up for? The letter clearly states that I have to opt out if I don't want it. And it should be, if you want it, you opt in, not opt out. So that is my only complaint about it. Whether or not it's a good program, I don't have anything to say pro or con about it, just that why was it set out by the MC Squared? Company, the aggregate company, electrical company, and why do we have to opt out and not opt in? There's many people that I know consider it junk mail, throw it in, don't know anything about it. And a lot of people are claiming they didn't get it. So, that's my comments. Thank you very much.
Alderman Albertini?
Can I get the attorney to respond to his question?
This is actually item 3C on the agenda, which is when we're going to cover that.
Sorry.
Next, we have Mr. Jeff Peters.
Hello, I'm Jeff Peters. I know I gotta state my name. Good evening, y'all. Thank you for having me again. I'm here, I know, to complain again, I'm sure. Just a few things in relation to the fire department, a proposal for their new radios for an aging system. Line item number 1M for the cost of $1,218 and line item number 3 for the cost of almost $32,000. I've been in radio for 24 years. I know what's involved with it. I know the technology changes by the minute or even the second. I understand the high temperatures incurred at a scene. I have not been on a fire scene myself, but at my work that I'm at, I have been on scene with high temperature electrical car fires. Line item number 4, the PMNN 4504, the batteries, they are not fire rated. Motorola does not make a fire rated battery, period. The weakest part of the portable radio is the plastic battery housing case or the rubber antenna. Without either one of those, they're pretty useless. I did see $1,218 worth of case covers in a green color and almost $32,000, call it $31,249, in microphones in green. I know that they're supposedly 500-degree rated, but what about the battery not rated or the mic cord not rated? I know this firsthand. As a taxpayer like most of this room, but not all, why would you spend $30,000 and have to take yet another $12,069 from your capital fund to cover this overage? I'm not here to pick on the fire department. They do a killer job at what they do, for sure. But that's just a lot of money that basically, why spend it? Why not use the black cases and the mics that come with the radios originally? Does your current XTS have the green cases? It was an option. Not sure if they have it or not. Are there any figures on the loss of these radios from heat, if that's what they're worried about? Lastly, on this matter, line number 1H, does this cover any damages to any radio? Any radio updates? Because we know that always evolves. Any and all shipping for the repairs and/or updates? Any of the battery claims, your portable chargers or mics? Does that cover that? I'm just asking, as I didn't see this listed. Usually, a contract will list what is and what is not covered. Does this order include the additional backup units, as in mics, cords, or accessories? I said, I understand this end of service life for this equipment, but do you think really $30,000 plus is necessary to do the same job safely? Secondly, I'll address again the lighting in Farmington. I did ask Director Anderson. The last meeting, he said those are ComEd-owned, all the lighting that's over there. It's really dim. It's horrible. I know, I see a couple people here that live over by me, the same thing. I'm on social media, I was with everybody else, and I did see a report of graffiti on the corner of Farmington Way and Huntington Drive. I have talked to this person whom had their fence spray painted. It's poorly lit over there, by the way. And another report of spray painting on winter wheat. Along with another car, they had their taillight broke. I'm not sure if they're, if they're related or not, but it is in the same subdivision. It's a bit close to my home and many others, who pay a lot more in real estate tax to live over there. I'm not saying it's some country club hills to live at, but it's definitely a lot more to live over there. There's also, pretty close to the new proposed water well on Huntington Drive. I've driven past there all hours of the day. It's pretty dimly lit over there. I heard some kind of a lighting update in the subdivision to keep the area lit up. Keeps the nonsense to a dull roar. And everyone says, more patrols, more patrols. That's not, not the answer. Police are already stretched out far enough. Simply just light up the area. I'm not asking nor implying that I want new lights, poles, or fixtures, but brighter lights would be more security to the area. And then lastly, I think you had talked about prior, was the electric aggregation. I'm gonna hang out and see what that's all about. I did not receive that letter. I don't know if anybody here has solar. Maybe that's why I have solar. I love it. Long story short, maybe that's why I didn't get that letter. Maybe it's an oversight, and maybe I'm the only one that didn't get the notice. Thank you for your time on these matters.
Thank you. And older woman Gramkowski, you wanted to address?
Yes, is it okay to just sit here?
Sure.
It'll be brief. I just wanted to congratulate the Belvidere Fury Hockey Team, both the JV Silver and the Varsity Gold. They both had fantastic seasons. I don't know if you follow them, but very proud of them. They're a combined high school team, and they pull players from Belvidere South, Belvidere North, North Boone, Hananega, Stoneman Valley, and Guilford. The Fury JV Silver team won the Illinois High School Hockey League Combined State Division semifinal game on Sunday, and they advanced yesterday, I'm sorry, they, they played last week. And they advanced to the game, the championship game yesterday where they, they won. So they're silver state champions in the Illinois Combined High School Hockey League. The Fury Gold Varsity Team had a fantastic season as well. They beat Maine on Friday night to advance to the state championship on Saturday night. The game against Maine was tied 3-3 after the third period and went into four overtime periods, which is the longest playoff game in state tournament history. So after that game, they advanced to the state championship game that they played on Saturday night, and they played in Rolling Meadows against the Yeti. And they beat that team with only 2 minutes and 48 seconds left. So they are the combined high school varsity team champions. They also will play, I believe it's Saturday, in the A-High, which is the Amateur Hockey Association Illinois Championship Game. So I think we've got a lot to be proud of in Belvidere. We're proud of the boys or, and girls that they play to, the coaches, the parents, and I'm a huge hockey supporter, and I just think that's a real win for Belvidere. And I really appreciate coming here and having an ice rink. We tried to do that in Elgin when I worked back there many years and we couldn't get it done, but Belvidere did. So, kudos to Belvidere.
Thank you. Okay, for our public forum, we have Hossel Levine Associates' presentation regarding the draft Belvidere Comprehensive Plan.
Would you start the podium, or did you want to do something in the middle, or how do you want to do it?
Probably, probably stick the chair.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you for giving us an opportunity to present the first draft of the comprehensive plan. We actually just wrapped up an open house that was held here earlier today from 4:00 to 6:00, or 4:00 to 5:45. Received a lot of input, some changes that we need to make in the plan. Some of the comments that came out of that, when I, when I maybe get to the slide, I can just quickly address some of the things, but our team, myself, and Jacob Moser, who's, who's also with me, will take all the input that we've collected so far through the, the open house. We'll prepare a round of provisions. So even what you're seeing up here today, it's not 100% final. And then our, our goal, I'll talk a little bit about next steps and where we're going, and take any questions that you may have. So real quick, I want to talk about the planning process. I want to just do a brief overview of the comprehensive plan itself. And I want to talk about next steps. And when I say brief overview, I'm gonna walk through a majority of the plan, but I want to go high level. I just want to talk about the topics that we're getting into in the plan, I'm sure, and I'm looking around. It looks like you all have a copy of this in front of you. If you don't, I know it was sent out, so hopefully you've had an opportunity to review it. If you have detailed questions, I'm open to you just raising your hand and stopping me on a page, but we can always go back as well. So whatever, whatever works for either, either group. So real quick, just about the planning process. So Hossel Levine was hired by the city to prepare a comprehensive plan. My name is Nick Davis. I'm a principal at Hossel Levine. I've been the project manager on this project since the beginning, when we started. And then with me is Jacob Moser, who I already identified. He's out in the audience taking notes. We've had a couple other people working on this project, but Jacob and I have really been the, the constant working through this project. So we've done a lot of the stakeholder discussions. We had a visioning workshop earlier in the process, and so the, the two of us have really been the, the constant on the project. But it's important, why do we do comprehensive plans? So it's a blueprint for the next two decades. And it doesn't mean you write this plan and you just stop. It means that you write this plan, and it's something that you're shooting for over the next 20, 20 years. But every couple of years, you're going to continue to review this document, update it, make sure that it's a live document. It's responsive to the times that you're in and the, the values that you have now, but also the things that you want to accomplish in the future. It'll identify, and it does identify, the community's desires, the needs, and the aspirations. So we talk about what the vision of this plan is, and then ultimately the goals that'll help achieve that vision. And then the subsequent chapters, so land use, transportation, these different components, are providing recommendations that are trying to achieve this overall vision. It provides a broad range of topics, or guides a broad range of topics. So it's hitting on land use. We talked just briefly about zoning. This isn't zoning. But what you talk about in this plan could impact some zoning changes or amendments that you may need to make. We talk about transportation, community facilities, your natural areas, a lot of different components of a comprehensive plan. And the last thing is it informs decisions on growth and development and investment. That's an important aspect of why we have a comprehensive plan. The goal here is that you prepare a document that captures all of the community's input. And it is very difficult. We went through this process. It's always very difficult to get everybody's ideas in, in one document and one cohesive approach. And so that's been our challenge. Hopefully tonight, through your questions and maybe potential revisions, you know, we'll continue to, to fine tune that and get it closer to what it needs to be. But once you have this established vision, you use this document to evaluate future projects. Could be infill projects, could be new growth areas, but you want to use this plan to, to all be sort of on the same page about what the expectations are for, for new development. The planning process was broken up into three steps. So we went through kickoff and existing conditions. Step 2 is vision statement, goals, and future land use. And step 3 is the draft and final comprehensive plan. We are, we are just closing out that vision statement, the goals and the future land use, and we're really transitioning into the last part of this, which is the draft and final comprehensive plan. So after tonight, will be us moving into the, the final step. Just a quick overview, so it's broken up into seven chapters. So this document that you have in front of you talks about the plan context. We talk about the community vision and goals, land use and development, transportation, community facilities, natural areas, and implementation. So I'm just gonna go through these somewhat quickly, but if you have a question, please stop me. So one of the first things that we identify is where you are in the region. So we establish your regional setting. You know, you in context to some of the surrounding communities, you in context to the, you know, the greater northern Illinois region. We just show some of the proximity to Rockford, all the way to Chicago, and you know, some of those draws that you have for people that you might want to bring into Belvidere, but also where your people in Belvidere are going to. The planning area is a, is a fairly large area. So we did identify the municipal boundary, which is that darker purple. And then that lighter purple is the overall planning area that we provided recommendations for. This is probably more clear in the future land use plans. When I get to that, I'll, I'll make a note of what that looks like. You can certainly continue to plan a little further to the north and to the south, but we thought, this being a 20-year plan, that this was a reasonable boundary. You know, if in the future, the utility connections or future infrastructure improvements are made, there's no reason that you couldn't continue to amend or adjust your planning area. But for now, this is a, what we thought was a reasonable 20-year outlook. So this is the existing land use. I mean, this should be very familiar in terms of what the uses are that make up the city. You got that concentration in the downtown where we're at right now, but mix, a wide variety of different uses. You start to transition out into your more traditional residential neighborhoods. You have a lot of industrial uses that are along 20 and 90. But the future land use plan identifies expanding that corridor along 90 and along 20. And we start pushing the residential development and commercial development just off the periphery of where your current municipal boundary is. So I think one of the best tests are to look at the existing land use, look at the future land use, and then ask yourself, is this a reasonable type of growth that we want to see in the next 20 years? You're not gonna see all of it. That's never really happened in, in most of these types of plans. But the hope is, if something were to develop in 20 years, is this the type of use we would want it to be? Because if someone comes in with an inconsistent use, that's your first benchmark of what we don't want to see, because this isn't consistent with our plan. We identify your current zoning, so this is, this is just inside your municipal boundary. We're not changing your zoning. We're not changing the zoning map. This is just a reference. It is important that when we start thinking about the future land uses, how does it relate to your, your current zoning code? Basically, what's on the ground. What are the requirements? Because what we're doing is policy and recommendation. The code is law. So we just want to make sure that these two, at the end, do speak to each other. So one of our recommendations, final recommendations will be, if this is the direction we all agree we want the future land use to go, you need to look at your current zone, current zoning code and determine what amendments need to be made. Could be small strategic land use amendments. It could be, it could be map changes. Those are things that you'll have to work out over the next couple of years when you start examining your zoning as it relates to your, your new future land use plan. We went through demographic snapshots, so we did a look at the population, your age, race and ethnicity. We also looked at the income, employment, education. So all of these were factors in determining how you're gonna grow, the direction you're growing. But it's really important to acknowledge, and this is something we talk about, is you can look at these, you can look at the numbers here, and there are patterns, but they're not everything. So part of this is also how the region is growing. So we're also looking at what's happening, not just in Belvidere, but what's happening in the, in the, you know, the northern Illinois region. And it doesn't need to limit you either. So when we talk about future land use, and I'm, I'm gonna stress that as you go through this document, a lot of this is aspirational. This is the direction you would like to go. And if it does go that way, this is consistent with what we're expecting to see. And so these numbers aren't, aren't the only thing that, that guide the way we, we planned in this document. Some of this is from the community input, some of this is from our planning expertise, and some of this is driven by the data. So there's a balance, kind of a, a back and forth. I mentioned community engagement. So we had done a department head workshop. We met with the joint committee, the, the workshop that we had at the very beginning of this project. We did a community facility survey. As part of that community facility survey, we got better understanding of what the housing in neighborhoods, economic development, transportation, community facilities and infrastructure, and open space issues were. And so as part of that, that really fed into our existing conditions report, but it also informed the recommendations we put in the plan. We had conducted key stakeholder interviews and conducted a community visioning workshop. The workshop was here. We had a couple of tables where we, we had these big maps out on the table, and people started to draw what they'd like to see, where they'd like to see it. As much as we could, we infused a lot of those recommendations into the plan. So a lot of that is guiding, is guided by input that we received from the public. The major issues that came out of the community visioning workshop that we had talked about were housing and residential, commercial and retail. There was a lot of discussion around industrial manufacturing. Transportation, but also truck traffic and impacts from vehicular traffic from a lot of these new uses coming in. We talked about bike and, and ped, and then also community facilities and infrastructure in the region. So all of that led to us drafting this vision statement. I'm not gonna read this vision statement, but if you had a chance to review it, what you'll notice is, we're just trying to identify in the future, you know, over the next 20 years, what are you trying to accomplish? And this vision statement, again, is very aspirational. It's lofty. This is a, this is sort of a, a guide for you when you start making your decisions in the future. This vision statement informed the goals, and these goals are where we built the recommendations in the plan around. So if we all can agree on the goals, and this was the process that we went through when we did this visioning workshop exercise, we identified six categories for what you're trying to achieve inside the comprehensive plan. And so the, the first one was about growth and development. We identified a couple of goals that we thought were appropriate and that would reflect the input that we had received. We talked about land use. So that land use bucket is a bit general. It talks about how you want to grow residential-wise, how you want to grow industrial or commercial. So you want to grow the different tax bases, but you want to balance it. It can't all be one type of use. You want to make sure that you're flexible and that you're considering a wide variety of uses, both because of how market downturns can occur, but it's also a different building market. So you just want to make sure that you're, you're providing the types of uses and destinations that people want to come to, that you're building off of what you currently have, and that the residential that you have support your current residents, but also future residents that may want to live here because of new employment opportunities. We talked about housing, community facilities, transportation, and the community character. And so a lot of this came, the community character component came from discussions when we did the, the key stakeholder interviews and focus group discussions, as well as when we met with the, the community for the visioning workshop. And, you know, that was something that came up a, a couple of times, is people, you know, like the routes that you have here. There's some improvements that could happen to buildings. There's improvements that could happen to properties. There's opportunities to, you know, convert some of these vacant properties into the types of uses that we're talking about in the plan. But while you're doing that, just thinking of the aesthetics and how you could just make Belvidere look the way that you want it to look in certain areas throughout the, throughout the city. So with the vision statement, the goals identified, we started to prepare the land use and development plan. To do this, we looked at a growth strategy. So we identified three different areas for your, your growth. And I'm, I'm always very cautious when we talk about this. You can, there's a lot of different ways to grow a community's population, and it doesn't have to just be outward. And that's not what the goal of this plan was, is to only grow and to grow out. So when we say growth strategy, we talk a lot about the downtown. That was something that we spoke a bunch about at the, the visioning workshop, is you have this absolute asset, which is the river, and how it touches the downtown. So finding different ways to increase your residential population in the downtown, that's a way of growing inward. So we talk about this in that urban core. That's your infill development. That's an opportunity to bring residents and bring more employment opportunities closer to this hub, the heart of the downtown. We talk about fringe development. And fringe development is where you're right on the periphery of your current municipal boundary, or where there's vacant properties against already built-out neighborhoods or employment areas. So it's not just, you know, pushing out into ag land. It's taking advantage of the infrastructure that's currently in place and building from there. The last part is that preservation and agriculture designation. So to the extent that we can, if we focus our energy on this urban core and we focus our energy on the, the fringe development, you can leave as much of that ag land that currently exists and operates, you know, for the next 20 years. That would be the goal. If for whatever reason, we start to develop beyond what we had planned for, that's a consideration you're gonna need to make, and you may need to update this plan. But we, we feel within reason, you can grow within this urban core and within this fringe development area first, and that should be the focus over the next 20 years. The land use plan identifies, and it's hard, I probably should have put in the existing land use and the land use plan next to each other so you get a better sense. And we, maybe that might be something we were adding. That was a comment that came up at the open house, and that's a very fair comment. It's, it can be hard for someone who's maybe not used to looking at these maps to, to see the difference between your existing land use and the future land use. There's a second map that we'll prepare. It'll just be the areas of change. So it'll show how we're recommending properties to change from what are currently being shown as probably ag land or a different type of use to what we're showing on the future map. It'll give you a better sense of how much area we're talking about. It might be hard to see, but if you're looking at the existing land use to the future land use, we're talking about increasing the footprint of Belvidere in a pretty significant way. So a lot of what we're showing south of 90 is light industrial. Most of that is shown as ag land on your existing land use. There's some areas that are up on the north side, up by 20. There's pockets of residential and a few commercial sites. But a lot of this is showing what that use could look like all the way along 20, shooting all the way out west. So we're, we're definitely trying to zero in on what the growth should be, both from the core, but also expanding out to that, to that fringe development. We do leave a lot of ag, sorry, go ahead.
I just, I, I'm a little, um, so between 20 and 90, there's a lot of light industrial where, and not a lot of orange, which is commercial. So I'm a little confused at why it would be light industrial there.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to go up and over you. So, so like through here is all commercial. That red is commercial. Are you talking about this commercial that's up here?
Yeah, that and to the left there too.
Okay, so we show commercial, sorry, I really shake your hand. Commercial, there is some multifamily that we're recommending along 20. There is some light industrial that's getting pulled up from this industrial development that's happening. And that's, you know, sort of already platted through here. So you're saying you'd like to see more commercial along 20 here?
Yeah, I just don't know that it's good to try to mix commercial with industrial, even though it is light industrial, like.
Okay. Okay, I mean, that's a, that's a fair point. I will say, we tried, I just don't want to get this in anybody's face. To the best that we could, I mean, we're fronting 20 with commercial, and then where it gets, you know, a certain distance away from the road and you start to lose visibility. I mean, I definitely think this through here, where it already is light industrial, we're just building off of, of what's there now. You know, there's a gas station here. This seems to be You know, there's a gas station here, this seems to be in line for light industrial in the future, but we can, we can take another look at it and see if commercial would be appropriate here. I do think, and we tried to address this on 20, um, one of the things that we're, we're mindful of too is not just showing the entire 20 corridor as commercial. This is something that we're seeing on Route 47, we're seeing this on Randall Road, and we're seeing this in some other areas where it's becoming unrealistic to support that much commercial. And that you do want to see some blended uses. So if light industrial is maybe not the right use, multifamily might be a more appropriate there, so that's something we could examine. But you do have commercial at some pretty key nodes, you have it at Pearl, you have it when you're coming off the highway. I just want to make sure we're not pulling it too far to the east or too far to the west. Just because it, it can be, it can be difficult to support that much commercial based on your user base. But it's certainly something we can take a look at, so it's a good point. Anybody else have a question? Sure, there's lots of questions, sorry.
Just to clarify, in the zoning code, for light industrial zoning, commercial is allowed in?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a max, great commercial, but even if it's light industrial, commercial is an option?
It's just, you know, right there off 90 and, and we're already getting the truck stop and some stuff in there. And I'd just like to see that built up with restaurants and shopping opportunities, maybe, you know, pop-up stores, stuff like that.
And it's a, I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to punt, but this is a guide, so I'm sure there's going to be some things that someone's going to come to you with a use we had not considered. Or with an idea that is, you know, maybe beyond what this plan was thinking of. And that the city's going to need to be, or want to be flexible, if it's the kind of use you think is appropriate. But your first pass is, are you consistent with our land use plan? So this is your first tool, so we definitely want to, to fine tune this and get it closer to what, you know, everybody wants it to be. Like I said, there's a couple of things, I can even see it from here, so it's driving me crazy. There's a couple of things in here that we do need to make some revisions based on feedback from the, the public open house, because I'm, some feedback that Gina and her team gave us. So there are some tweaks that'll be made to this. When we come back to present this again, I will make sure to highlight what's changed from what you're looking at now. I don't want you to have to go, um, kind of magic eye and, and find it. Any other questions? Sure.
Question. Recreational, what do you have up there for recreational?
So we talk about the need for making sure that as you develop in the future. You're incorporating recreation, parks and open space into, into those developments. This is a very important distinction, I want to make sure that we're very clear. This land use plan should not identify parks and open space unless the city is going to buy the land. If I do that, it puts you in legal jeopardy, so I can't show it on the map, um, but I can talk about it in the plan. So all of these areas that show, uh, yellow or, um, so that show medium density residential or high density residential. All of these would need to incorporate parks and open space into their future development, so it's a really good question.
Actually, I'm looking, I'm, I'm speaking, I guess, more like an amusement park or a, a water park.
Okay.
You know, something like that, I mean, I don't see any development for that kind of thing for the community.
I guess we had not, had not thought about those types of uses, that's something that I can take a, take another look at and see if that's something that, you know, is, is something that might be supported by your market. Okay. Any other questions about the, the land use? Okay, keep moving. So one of the things that we did is, so you have the land use plan, and by design it is meant to be general. It needs to be flexible, um, when we say commercial, that could be retail, restaurant, service uses. So when you think about commercial and then you break it down into those categories, and then you even think further down to the uses that would be appropriate. There's a lot of things that can kind of roll up into that, and that's, that's by design. You want this land use plan to be general. It's your zoning map and your zoning code that are going to pro- uh, provide the level of specificity that you're, you're wanting to, uh, maybe zero in on when someone comes in for a, a development proposal. But you're going to use these as kind of like a one-two punch. So you're going to use your land use plan to make sure people are consistent right off the bat. And then they have to follow the zoning code if they're going to build out, depending on what type of use is appropriate. To give a little bit more specificity in the comprehensive plan, we broke out a residential areas plan and an economic development plan. So this residential areas plan just provides a little bit more guidance about how, how you should be treating existing neighborhoods. What neighborhood character means to people of Belvidere, how we, uh, diversify your housing stock. That was something that came up a lot during the outreach was, uh, housing affordability and housing stock. And then we talk about high density infill and what that looks like. And the plan isn't to, um, you know, be pushing high density infill in every aspect of the community. It's in some targeted areas that are appropriate and that are supported by the employment districts that are around it. The idea of live-work or workforce housing is something that the plan needs to talk to, it needs to balance. But we also identify areas that are appropriate for more traditional residential neighborhoods, um, medium density residential neighborhoods. And so when you go through this, we're trying to hit all of these different, I'll say price points, product types, um, different ways that people want to live in Belvidere. We're in a weird time where, um, you know, young professionals that are looking for a starter home or are looking for a smaller space, um, just to, just to maybe make their first move. Are in the same category of some people who are looking to downsize and they're looking, they want to stay in Belvidere, but they don't have an option to stay in Belvidere. So it's just an interesting point in time where people are starting to look for very similar products. And so that's something that you want to make sure you're accommodating when you start thinking about the types of uses that are coming to Belvidere. So this residential area plan, it isolates what's on the land use plan, but it's very specific to residential areas. So I encourage you to look at this map if you have questions, um, you know, certainly reach out to us or reach out to Dina and let us know, but yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, just curious how, please, can the fire protection, can it raise on that?
In terms of their service area? So this is something that we talked about in the beginning when we met with the department heads. So yeah, certainly as, as the community grows, the service areas are going to need to grow. There's most likely going to need to be a facility up on 20, these are, that's a part of a needs assessment. It's something that the fire and safety would need to, I mean, they know this, but they would need to most likely build out either manned or unmanned station. I'm not, I'm not a facility planner, but they know and are aware that the land use plan is starting to identify areas that they wouldn't be able to adequately serve based on their current infrastructure and their current, um, resources. So it is something that we talk about, I would say this probably, there's two things that often happen when you do these land use plans, I'll say three. That infrastructure planning with the service providers is important. We're not talking just fire and safety, but also utility, water, um, all those different components. And the other side of this is transportation network. So we also talk about this in the plan, but it's something that you'll need to, as a city, be mindful of when you work with, um, uh, county DOT, state DOT. And then just your, your internal streets that you manage. You got to make sure that the roads can support the kind of traffic that would be coming that way. So could be widening some of the roads, it could be making roadway connections that don't exist now. Some of this is chicken or the egg, what's going to happen first? There are some areas that the residential development or commercial development might drive why the road needs to be there. And it can be the flip, a road that's put in place at the right time could accommodate future growth. So to, to that point, um, those are departments that we're talking to, they're very aware of the plan. We'll continue to work with them when we go through the draft and make sure that we're not putting anything out there that wouldn't be able to adequately serve, so that's a good point. They'll have to grow with the plan, it's probably the easiest way to respond to that, and they know that. Yep. Any other questions? Sorry, I talk fast, I drank some coffee and I probably shouldn't have, so here we go, alright. Commercial unemployment, so this is the other ones, this is another breakout from the land use plan. So we talked about image and character, uh, access and mobility, how you're marketing these spaces, workforce development. There's a lot of recommendations that go along this. So this again is just an isolation of the land use plan, just gives you a little bit more specificity about what we mean when we say, you know, this should be commercial. What we mean by that is, you know, X. And so this map, um, just a breakout, you can start to see the areas that are, are really solely about commercial. So you see existing employment areas, those are the ones that are green, I'm sorry, green, those are the ones that are gray. All the ones that are color, and this is that good isolation map, you can start to see what we're proposing versus what's there now. So I know there's been a couple of comments at the open house that maybe we're not thinking big enough. We're, we're talking about more than doubling the footprint in this land use plan with our recommendations. Again, our intent is not that you'll double this over the next 20 years. It's if someone comes in, they need to be consistent with what we're showing on this map, and they're going to start to, to kind of fill in over time. Did you have a question? Sorry.
So you feel like the, um, the Hard Rock Cafe will fuel the, the business 20 commercial development all the way past Beaver Valley Road?
So I do think over time, that's a logical place to grow your commercial. So we're talking about, you're like down over here going, going to the east or you want to go to the west?
Business 20 up top.
So, oh, you're talking about up here, going this way. I think what's going to drive that commercial development is going to be the residential that's coming in above it. And that's going to time out, that should happen at about the same time. So the development, and I think it's going to start from the east and work its way west. Part of that is because of the infrastructure that's in place, and so how this'll, this'll work out with your demand. The roadway improvements are going to help, but you're going to start with, this is kind of deceiving, let me go back. So we show all of this residential development to the north of 20 with this edge of commercial, uh, right along 20. Those two would happen in, I'll call them like phases. So this would happen as, we'll say a phase one, this could happen as a phase two. But it's a substantial amount of redevelopment that'll need to occur. So it's, that's not the only people who's going to support these businesses, but it is going to be built out that way, most likely, that's what we typically see. Okay. Any other questions? Yeah.
Wouldn't, um, the movement or spread towards Rockford promote traffic to go to Rockford instead of staying in Belvidere?
So that roadway improvement is, is happening already. So yes, it will get easier to go to, I mean, to your point, it will be easier to go to Rockford than it might be now. But it is going to support additional traffic. If you put the right uses in there, you're going to make it more difficult for someone to drive by that use to go to Rockford. And I'm not going to say people will never go to Rockford, um, but putting that road in is, is really part of the driver of what's going to get people going to Rockford quicker. And taking advantage of that infrastructure and building off of it are what you can do to keep people in, in Belvidere, if that makes sense.
They have the, the city built up, you know, in the town, I don't want them to go all the way to Rockford.
I don't either, yeah, I mean, our, our plan's recommendation is not to push people to Rockford. What I'm seeing is that roadway improvement's going to happen, 20. So it's your advantage to take it, uh, take that and build off of it and put the commercial and residential there. So you have the, the things that would keep people here, which is housing, employment, commercial, restaurants, retail. There will be people who will go, but there will also be people from the edges of Rockford that might come here, so that's something to, to consider. Yeah, good point.
Put a moat across it.
No moat, yeah, no moat. Anybody else? Alright. Transportation. For the transportation, a lot of this is driven by the, pun intended, I suppose, a lot of this is driven by the land use plan. So the improvements that we talk about with the roadway network are looking at your principal arterials, minor arterials, major collectors, minor collectors, local roads. Really what we looked at is just the roadway infrastructure you have now and how it would be, um, needed to be upgraded to support some of these future uses. So we don't identify every road that would need to be built or every road that needs to be improved, we're talking about some of the major connections, um, getting you north, south or east, west. Even in talking today with the city's public works, there's still some adjustments that we need to make to the, to the roadway network. So again, when we come back next time to talk to you, we'll make sure we identify what roads, um, just aren't going to work based on some recent input that was received. But we talk about safe and efficient travel, uh, we talk about curb cut consolidation in some areas. I think some of the newer development is doing a good job of limiting the amount of curb cuts that you're seeing along some of these major roads. But when you start to retrofit or look at some of these older properties, curb cut consolidation is something you might want to look at. This is an example, or this is the roadway network map. The blue lines are the roads that we show as proposed roadways extension, or roadway extensions. That was the one that in talking to public works, there's a couple of tweaks that we want to make in there and, and we'll, we'll make those adjustments and get that out. We talk about active transportation, so complete streets, bikes, greenways and trails were something that came up quite a bit during the community input, community feedback. Especially as you talk about connecting with the river, but then once you're connected to the river, how do you, well, once you get to the river, it's, it's good. But how do you get down to the river, how are you coming from some of the residential neighborhoods? We talked to someone today from the, the conservation district, they talked about some of the trails that they're building, but some of the other trails that need to connect into that. So it's a very tricky network, but you want to try to get this all connected so it's easy to come into, um, you know, some of these great downtown assets or some of these other corridor assets. You've got to make sure that the trails and the bike lanes are, are, are in place. Pedestrian pathways were something that we're talked about. This just shows the, the planned trail network. So the dark green minus a trail that's over on the east side that we don't have on here. The dark green are the existing trails, the yellow are planned trails and the blue are proposed trails. The difference between that, if they're planned, it means it's something that's on the books, maybe there's funding in place or you're working towards funding. This is an idea that somebody's put out there. The blue are other trails that, um, you know, are, are proposed, it would be a great idea. These are more long-term, you're starting to see a loop in how you're going to make these connections. Trails take a lot of time until like right at the end when it all just seems to come together. So you want to continue to, to fund these projects and make these connections, it's something that's come up quite a bit during our outreach. Uh, and then one of the last sections, community facilities. So this just talks about the city services, public and sa- or public safety, uh, parks and recreation. This was a, a feedback that we received, so this is, this is largely from the park district when we talk about park and recreation. City needs to work in conjunction with the park district, there's some tweaking to this language, you need to make it more clear, this is a park district, not a department within the city. That's something that's very unique to Illinois. And just making sure that when we start to talk about how this, this area could grow, you do want to make sure that you have adequate park, you have adequate re- uh, recreation. There are requirements at the state level about what that's a federal level of what you should be doing to serve, uh, the community that you currently have, but also your future, uh, residents. We just want to make sure that you have the parks that support, um, you know, everybody that lives here. We identify the spaces that are here now, the community facilities. Kind of to your point, there's a, um, there are community facilities off to the, to the northwest side that aren't there now that you can see as that development occurs. You know, you'll have more of these nodes, these different uses that are going to need to push out along business 20. Um, and then if we do make some improvements, you know, down by 90, uh, those are going to be, those are going to be some areas we're going to need some additional, um, facilities just to support. Both that industrial, but also residential and commercial use. Natural areas, the last section, um, we just talked about what is a conservation district, forestry, dark sky initiatives. Different components of what it means to just make sure you're conserving, uh, a lot of the natural area that you have, both along the river and the green space and the prairie areas. You have a pretty substantial network established already and preserved already. I think it's a huge asset, the river and this conservation areas, uh, and your parks and open space are a huge asset for the community to, to continue to build off of. You have a lot of wetlands and floodplains, things that are going to need to be considered when you start to look at future development. There's a lot of low-lying areas. I would say maybe a third of the people who came up to our land use map today was like, this area right here is a low area. It's like, that's going to be true for, for quite a bit of these other development opportunities, it's probably why areas haven't developed. They weren't as easy as maybe some of these other ones. And so when, when future development does come to the table, you're going to want to make sure that they're, um, mindful of the wetlands and that they're mindful of the floodplain, uh, impacts that are going to occur. Otherwise you're going to have, um, more issues with water. This just identifies on a map where all of these, these different, uh, 100-year flood, 500-year flood and the conservation areas are. We also identify the wetlands, so those are areas that when development occurs, you're going to be, uh, very mindful about what that looks like. And in the last section, I'll go through this one pretty quick. This just talks about how to use the comprehensive plan, so this is important. One of the things that I didn't talk about when we were going through why you should do a comprehensive plan, probably one of the most important. Is that if you have a plan that is, um, adopted by your community, it's one of the best tools that you have for, uh, getting additional funding. So most funding sources that you go to, one of the first things they're going to ask you is, are, are the funds that you're seeking. And the, uh, improvement that you're trying to make consistent with your comprehensive plan, because that's how they know that this is a plan that is supported by the community. And that to them is more of a slam dunk or a good use of the dollars, it's not a project that's going to be up for a fight. So an important aspect of why we do these plans is to help you generate and help you, um, attain more funding in the future. It also helps the development community and property owners have a clear understanding of what you're trying to do. So that way they have some level of fair certainty about the direction that their proposals may go. So we talk about how you'll use this plan, how you want to develop and maintain partnerships. There were a lot of people that the city connected us with throughout this project. Those are people that you're going to want to stay connected, you know, over the next five, 10, 15 years. Just to make sure this plan is still relevant and it still meets the needs of the community. We talked about that. Maintain public communication, so you started a process with the public, that's something you may also want to consider, uh, consider. You know, it could be once a year or once every couple of years, you have another engagement, you, you get these maps out, are we still moving in this direction, do we have any questions? You should review and update this plan often. This was a, a complete rewrite, what we did for this process. To avoid that, we recommend every three or five years, you just sit down as a, you audit the plan and you just go through it. And it's like, look, that was a great idea, it's just never going to happen, um, we need to, we need to, you know, move a different direction. Or, you know, sometimes you see things that you forgot were in the plan, we see that a lot, uh, when people facilitate these discussions. But you do this in an effort to just make sure that the plan is current. That way you're doing minor updates as opposed to having to rewrite this in 10 years. If you update your plan every couple of years internally as a team, it, it will help you avoid having to completely rewrite your plan in like 10 or 15 years. So that's just, just a recommendation, something we talk about. And then the last thing was just potential funding sources. So we identify many of which probably most of you know, um, but there are, there are people in the business community or residents that sometimes aren't aware of how many funding sources are out there. And using this plan to go after some of these funding sources is, is kind of like step one, you got to make sure you have this and that it's consistent. And I think, oh, I don't know what that button did. Uh, I think that, that wraps up the different funding sources we identified and talked about. And then I just want to go into the next steps. Oh, I don't know why they're like that, that's terrible. Alright, let's do this. Alright, no, no transition or action, sorry. Alright, so next steps. So the next step is moving through step three, so we need to revise the draft comprehensive plan document. Our goal is, and these dates are, I'm going to say tentative, uh, and that's our goal, right Gina, I'm looking at Gina for the head nod. So March 12th, we'd like to get this back to you, that's very reasonable for our team. Most likely it's going to be, uh, available a little bit sooner, but the goal is to have a revised draft plan document available for public review by March 12th. We'll come back April 9th with the final draft plan. We'll meet with Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing, uh, so in that we'll give Uh, so in that we'll give a very similar presentation. The only difference is we'll highlight the things that have changed from, from this presentation. I, I don't want you to have to go find it. Uh, and then the goal would be to, on April 15th, um, meet with city council to do our first reading. So you're not, you're not reviewing it for adoption, you're reviewing it if you have any questions. Um, those are things that we can field. And then we would be back on May 6th to, you know, uh, hopefully come back, do one final presentation and discussion about the plan and then move forward with adoption. So that's the goal. Uh, and then ultimately by May 21st, you should have your final comprehensive plan document. I had a couple of people ask me this, so I, I'll say it again tonight. Um, the, the goal is like, tonight was one of the first opportunities for the public to see the draft plan and come and talk to us about it. Certainly at the public hearing, they'll have an opportunity, April 9th, to give additional feedback. Um, and then as we go through the city council presentations and discussions, uh, people have an opportunity to give us feedback. So tonight isn't the only opportunity to tell us, you know, maybe what some of your comments are, what some of your issues were. Uh, you know, we still have some time before we get to May 21st. Hopefully when you're, well, May 6th, when you're, you're moving to your, your adopted, your adopted document. So any questions, any comments?
Record question. The, and the trails are really dear to me. Uh, you said the yellows, uh, is, are they planned?
Were planned, but that, I'm going to go check the sources because it's going to be multiple sources. It's not going to be like one place that has a plan for it. Yeah, good question, yep. No, but we should document those and I probably know how they, we can, we can identify what they're coming from. That's a good, right when I said it, I was thinking to myself, I don't know where all of these are playing from. So that's a good, that's a good comment. So we'll have to look that up and I can share that with you. That's good information.
And I'd like to remind the commissioners, the plan commission, uh, plan commission commissioners that unlike a planned zoning meeting, this is on TV and is being recorded, so use your microphones.
Sorry. Any other comments, questions, thoughts?
So, uh, with regard to our zoning code and the plan, um, is it going to talk, uh, does it consider a total restructuring of our zoning code? And how does that process work?
Okay.
So will they be done in tandem, et cetera?
Okay, great question. So a couple, a couple of things there. One, uh, we were hired to do the comprehensive plan. Um, the first step before you even update your zoning code, which is separate from this project, would be to update. That would be my first recommendation is like, review your comp plan, make sure it's current. Uh, the reason you want to do that is there are just enough general things in a comprehensive plan that all they ever need to be is general. Um, but to answer your question, uh, so after you adopt this comprehensive plan, you know, I would recommend an audit. It's a pretty quick thing to do. You just audit your zoning code to determine what's inconsistent or not aligned with the land use plan. Uh, and that's something you can do internally as staff. That's something that you can, you can hire up for. Um, that was when you would determine whether or not you need to amend your code. Sometimes you have to completely rewrite. My guess is that's not the case here. You're probably just making strategic amendments if anything. Um, so that, yeah, the goal here wouldn't be to write a plan that, that automatically invalidates your zoning code. Um, but you will need to make some adjustments just based on some of the uses that we've talked about. Um, and you know, maybe some of the, the dwelling units that we've talked about, that kind of thing.
Well, obviously they have to be consistent with each other, right? So I guess I would ask Gina, uh, her input with regard to where it sits currently. And how, and what do you foresee?
So again, the comp plan is pretty vague and your zoning code is what specifies it. There will be some changes. Uh, for instance, in our zoning code right now, we have zoning districts for corporate centers, six-story mixed-use buildings, um, all the stuff that was highlighted in the floor neighborhood plan. Since that part of the plan is, is no longer valid, there'll be, uh, tax amendment to remove those districts from the zoning code because they're no longer needed. Um, as far as residential, we do have several residential districts. All of them basically fit into these districts. Um, and the great thing with our zoning code is if it is a brand-new development that doesn't quite fit into anything, we can just do a special use for plan development and kind of custom make it. Uh, but yeah, there will be immediately tax amendments to remove, um, zoning districts that no longer comply with the comp plan. And then we can take a, a deeper look later. But in the meantime, uh, special uses for plan developments can also control things.
Any other questions? All right. I know I threw a lot at you there. So I hope you had a chance to review it. If you do have additional questions, we're going to see you again. Um, you know, look forward to, uh, making the revisions that, uh, we talked about today and then coming back, talking to the different groups and moving this through the approval process. So with that, I, I appreciate your time. I don't have anything else to present and thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gunevood, be appropriate for the chair of the commission to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Could I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Oh, you're fine.
Two or three minutes.
You can leave it on because we're going to use. No, we're going to do a recess right before, um, the budget.
That's one out of the air.
We can move on.
We could all take a small five-minute break. Okay, moving on. Um, under public safety, we have no unfinished business. Under public safety, new business, we have a police department update.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Uh, since my last update, uh, the Belvedere Police Department met with Fire and Police Commission last week. Uh, they approved two of our three, uh, entry-level backgrounds. Uh, the next step will be the, uh, two that passed will have a polygraph and then an interview with the Fire and Police Commission. Uh, we currently have two openings to fill. Uh, we have one long-term medical and one, uh, military deployment currently. Uh, our next basic academy in May is, uh, in Stock Valley, in Dixon. Uh, recruits Vanegas, Bendel, and Gibson are in step five, which is solo patrol, and they're progressing to standards. Uh, we currently have two recruits still in the FTO program riding with FTOs. Uh, Hauser and, uh, Laura Parra, and they are also progressing to standards. We were able to get, uh, two Dodge Durangos from Galena Chrysler last week. Uh, so they are in the queue to get outfitted. Uh, we, uh, currently have two others that are also in the queue to get outfitted. Uh, DC Wallace, uh, DC Smaha, Officer Blankenship and Officer Schwartz participated in the Chili Cook-Off last week and won People's Choice Award. Uh, the, what's that? Uh, apparent, apparently we have some sore losers. Uh, the, uh, police department, uh, had to unfortunately cancel the Citizens Police Academy to low enrollment. And last, uh, uh, bit of information, I am currently still working on the annual report, uh, crime stats. I would anticipate having those, uh, available next month.
Any questions for the chief? Seeing none. Thank you, Chief. And under B, we have a fire department update. Chief Shadle.
Thank you, Elderwoman Freeman. The men and women of the Belvedere Fire Department continued to provide excellent service over the last 30 days. There, they responded to 268 calls for service, averaging 8.3 calls per day. 195 of those were medical calls. And of those medical calls, 166 patients were transported last month. 37% went to OSF, 35% stayed here in town. 17% went to UW Rockford and 11% to Mercy Riverside. There were 17 general assistance calls, 10 motor vehicle accidents with injuries. We administered CPR four times. We responded to four carbon monoxide incidents where they found carbon monoxide. Three gas leaks, uh, two building fires. One of them was a attic of a mobile home. Fortunately it was extinguished right away and the vast majority of the belongings were, um, were fine. So that's good. And then, um, on South State, there was a contractor working in the attic and it was a, a small fire that we responded to. There was one elevator rescue and 32 other various calls. We received aid from other departments 11 times. Nine of those times were ambulances. And then we gave aid seven times and all seven times were our ambulances. Shannon and I are continuing to work with our billing company. We finally, this afternoon, received the Medicaid paperwork, which we were happy to get. So far in February, we've billed out 116 trips with chart of $270,698 and we have collected $45,766. Inspections, we continue to reduce deficient systems in town. There are currently 68 out of 608 total fire protection systems. Inspectors are also reviewing product, Project Yukon and, uh, just size of that bill. Over nine, I've sprinkled. In total, there's over 700 inspectable properties in Belvedere. So between the new properties and following up with the deficiencies and past dues and then... properties and following up with the deficiencies and past dues, and then attempting to go out to get the annuals, the inspectors are all, have as much work as they can handle, and then some. So our 160, our utility truck, it received, we've finally got the topper in, we're repurposing that vehicle. It was basically used for our trailer, pulling our TRT and hazmat trailers, and also general use for like ALS calls. What we're doing is with the topper and slide-out tray, we are able to also add our water rescue equipment to that, and then that will take away the need to replace 140, which is our water rescue vehicle. So we won't be bringing that to council to replace it. So O2 Econoline E350, old, was a repurposed ambulance, so we won't need to replace that by all the work we did with 160. We renamed it to 142 to match its MABUS designation for what it does. Last week at Fire and Police Commission, our promotional list was finalized. And then, tiny bit of background, just for understanding, OSF is our EMS resource hospital, and we work with them. They basically do two main things. They oversee our protocols, like the EMD, the doctor authorizes the protocols, which authorizes us to provide care according to those protocols. So that's out of OSF. There's three health, health systems in the area. I met with all three health systems just to see how they handle everything, and what I learned from that is that a lot of the health systems provide in-house, in-person training. And then I asked OSF if they'd do that for us, and they said absolutely. So now, three times a month, OSF is coming and teaching all of us our ConEd required hours in person and hands-on, so that will enhance our training. Before that, most of our training we did was online, which, this is much better. So that concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Chief Shadle? Alderwoman Frank?
I was just going to ask you for your Medicare or your Medicaid payments, if that's, if you're happy with that amount. That sounds like a small amount compared to what you billed and what you received. Two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars, and you received forty-five thousand dollars?
Yep, that's just so, absolutely. So the average ambulance cost is around twenty-one hundred dollars. We were anticipating receiving a total of five hundred dollars per, per ambulance trip. So one thing to remember is a lot of the money we are receiving today is from trips one month, two months, three months ago, so they don't always correlate. We haven't received any revenue from Medicaid because with, since we haven't had approval, so that's creating a lag. And then after May one, we'll be able to apply for the GEMT funding, which should be a substantial, maybe one-hundred or two-hundred thousand dollars over the year, which will add to what our reimbursement per Medicaid call is. But yeah, in general, that is the EMS business. It's the nine-one-one being available to, to run calls is, and that's why we are losing in general, that's why we lost our private contractor to do that, because it's very difficult to be profitable.
But you think it's going to get better as the day, as the months go on?
I sure hope so.
I do too.
I'm working really hard, and thank you, Shannon, for all the help you do with all that. And just all the filings, all the paperwork, all the, all the correspondence that we're doing back and forth to get in place. I mean, we're almost ten months in, and, and we're still, still working hard to, to get this all ironed out. So hopefully, after that, and then next year after the GEMT, and then we should be smooth sailing, so.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody else? Shannon?
Thank you. I just wanted to add real quick. Chief Shadle mentioned that critical piece of documentation for Medicaid that we just received today, and by receiving that, our billing company can now release the four-hundred-and-twenty-nine claims that it's had to hold until we got that piece of information. So hopefully, that'll add to the revenue as well. I know they're a little slower than Medicare at paying, but at least now they can release those invoices.
Thank you. Anybody else? Um, I just had a quick one. I, I try to learn something new every day, and this might be a weird question, but all those sprinklers, how often do you test those, and how do you test them? You don't just like turn them on and then spray the products, right?
No, a lot of sprinklers, they work, they have a film in in there that melts, so there's, you don't really test the sprinklers themselves, so to say. I'm sure they have usual replacement cycles. But annually, any fire protection system, either sprinklers or a fire, automatic fire alarm system, has to be inspected not by the fire department, but by a fire alarm company. And so those companies, what, how we work, that's where the Bricer Compliance Engine comes in, and that's where they put the results of those annual tests. So that's something that we don't provide because, because we can't, we're not a company that, that does that, but so they, the company that provides that is, is on an annual basis, and I'm sure they have standards that they measure those against in replacement cycles. They do test the pumps. The pumps that flow the water in the buildings, they, they do run those because they're able to do that and see what kind of pressures they're generating and information like that.
Thank you. Okay, I believe item C is also yours, Chief.
All right, thank you very much. You guys will see in your packet, this is the regional AFG grant. And so, as you guys know, this has been about a year and a half process, and it is a regional grant for all four fire agencies within Boone County. We all cooperated together and worked together to come up with a plan to solve our problem with, in the outlying areas of the county and then other pockets surrounding the city, there is limited to no portable radio communication. So one solution to that is, is digital radio, which is StarCom, which is what police use and the sheriff. So they switched over quite a few years ago. And so what these radios are, is they're dual-band, because the VHF analog is still a requirement for on the fire ground, because the radios communicate directly to the other radio. They don't have to reach a tower, they just, it's radio to radio. And then the other thing about that is the transmission of sounds and voices in noisy environments, although getting significantly better, they still say the VHF is able to transmit those sounds more, more clearly. So what we did is last December, got all an RFP, all the responses from an RFP that you guys had approved and brought out, and there was three contractors that responded to the request for proposals. And within the RFP, I asked them to provide radios so we could test the products. And so we did that, all four agencies sent representatives, and we tested the products. On that second page, right after my memo, you'll see the results of those tests, and you'll see some of the costs broke down. And then basically, I had asked each chief of the other departments which radio they wanted to go to. Unanimously, they said Motorola. Motorola and Harris are, those were both, both good options. The Motorola's are our current radios. They also were more streamlined, more easy to use. We believe that to be the best option for us. So with the grant, as you guys know, each department got an allotment of radios as requested, and then the cost of that is ten percent to each entity. So if you look at the third page, you'll see that broken down. So for example, City of Belvidere, we requested fourteen dual-band radios and some chargers. The total cost of those is one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars, and our ten percent cost share is twelve-thousand, sixty-nine dollars, which we budgeted for in the capital plan last year for this year. It's already in the capital budget, that money, to do that. So the, of the five-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand roughly, the cost share between the four agencies is under sixty thousand, so it's a great opportunity. Obviously, the situation in Boone County was, had, we were able to demonstrate such a need to allocate from FEMA those types of funds. They're funding this project, and I would respectfully request the motion to purchase sixty-eight dual-band radios and associated equipment as quoted by Rock River Service for five-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents. I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Stevens, second. Second by Elder Woman Mohol. Any questions, comments? Chief, there was a public speaker that had some concerns. Did you want to address any of that?
Sure. One thing, I wrote a couple of them down. So the first one that I'll answer is the green housing. Those radios come standard and, and black, and he mentioned a twelve-hundred-dollar expense. And broken down between the sixty-eight radios and then our cost share, our cost to do that is, is twenty-five dollars. And why I think that's a good investment for us is because, as you see, these are very expensive, and then almost fifty percent of the time, it's dark outside. And so that's really why they're, they're green, they're easy, easy to find. They're like a neon, a neon green, kind of like a, a traffic safety vest. So they're not reflective, but they are very bright in color. So that's also, and generally, too, for practice, a lot of the command officer radios are black, and then these rugged ones for the firefighters are this, and they're a different color. So you can tell which ones are the ones that are rugged and made for firefighting. So some of the concerns with the radio speaker mics, yeah, they're, they're, they're expensive, they're actually, you know, less expensive than the Harris ones, and I, I think, you know, over four hundred dollars for a radio speaker mic sounds outrageous to me as well, and I can understand that. But I also understand that the reason they're expensive, number one, they're for public safety, and they're rated for, for heat, they're made specifically for firefighters. And two is they actually have four different microphones in those, front and back-facing, and they have advanced noise cancellation. So if you're operating next to a fire pump and you need, you know, your radio and your, need to increase the pressure, and the operator's trying to radio back, obviously, it's a very noisy environment. If someone's cutting a garage door open to force entry and you're communicating, there's the sound of a chainsaw going next to you. So we operate in very noisy environments. You know, say it's a chaotic scene on a medical call, and there's yelling and screaming, and we still got a radio to dispatch back or get resources. The microphones are incredibly impressive. When we did the test, we were next to an air compressor, and I was running a leaf blower, and they could hear me fine on, on those. So that, that answers that. The concerns about the battery, like the battery being the weakest point, that is Motorola's fire radio, and it comes with two batteries, that one, and then one that's bigger and more expensive and lasts longer. So that's not a lot of options there. And the concern with the melting temperatures of the plastics of the cord and the antenna, yeah, those are the weakest lengths of those, but they actually melt at the same temperature approximately as the face piece that the firefighters wear. It's, so you think, so firefighters don't go into flames to fight fires. I mean, we go into hot places to rescue somebody, but if you rescue someone and you pull them through an area like that, it's, you know, we, they wouldn't survive. If the temperatures are that hot, really, those firefighters should not be in there. They should be evacuating out, and they're made to withstand those high temperatures for a short period of time. So basically, just to evacuate out, and they're, the NFPA standard for the face piece itself is, is five-hundred degrees, so we might be surprised to learn that thing that's protecting our face melts that, at that temperature. But that is, that's the, the radios that they, they offer. The, there is one that is a little more rugged, and it fully meets the NFPA standard for radios, and that was that quote from Harris that you guys saw in there, for seven-hundred and, over seven-hundred thousand dollars. So that one was just cost prohibitive. The grant allow, had an allotment of nine-thousand-five-hundred as a max, and there were two, two radios that were over that instantaneously, and it was the Harris one, and then the Motorola has their, their next radio series, which is their newest, which was cost prohibitive too. So of those three, those were really, really the, the choices that we had. So I think that answers the majority of his concerns that he had. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion in a second. So all those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Wendy.
I wanted to ask you a question too. Okay. Pass this on. So the motion is to purchase sixty-eight dual-band radios for five-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand. So why would we do a motion for sixty-eight when our cost is twelve thousand?
Okay, back quite, quite a, quite some time ago, we signed a memorandum of understanding what agency has to be the lead agency and handle the procurement of, of the whole thing. So it goes through the City of Belvidere, and there's only, that way, everything has to go through us, and then we'll get reimbursed the ten percent from the other agencies before they get their radios, so.
Okay, that's what I wanted you to explain. Okay, so the other question is, a couple of years ago, we bought several radios, and we went into the next year's budget and the next year's budget. Those radios you can still use, they're not obsolete?
Absolutely. Those are pure VHF radios, and we will one-hundred percent be able to use those a lot of times, especially the company officers, which there's three, will have one on the fireground tactical channel and one on the dispatch channel. Also, we're trying to work through how to best handle the, at dispatch, because Starcom has a forty-eight dollars per month port, per radio cost. And so right now, we're only paying about eighteen dollars a month per radio because it's not the primary dispatch, but there's ways that we could use it as, probably what we're going to land on is use it as a backup, so if you happen to need it or happen to be out. But those, those other radios will absolutely function on the fireground for the long foreseeable future.
Thank you for your explanation. Thanks.
Anybody else? Alderman Albertini?
Thank you. So you're getting a grant for a good amount of this. What is the total cost it's going to cost the city for these sixty-eight radios? I guess I'm missing that.
And Chief, I think he means for the radios that the city's buying, because we're not buying sixty-eight. That's all the radios together, for all the government and agencies.
Correct. Once the radios are shipped an invoice, then we'll request the money from FEMA, and they would, they'll supply five-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand of that. And then the other ten percent cost share will come. So our cost to the City of Belvidere, and we should be able to do this without any cash flows, where we're, we're not, we're not outlaying six-hundred outlaying six-hundred-thousand dollars. We should be able to invoice, get the money from FEMA, and then pay it. So, the only outflow of money from the city of Belvidere for this whole thing is twelve thousand dollars, twelve thousand, sixty-nine dollars and ten cents.
Okay, thanks. That's what I thought I was reading, but mentally, I just wanted to make sure I was clear. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes. And we have D, a Special Olympics athlete parade request. So, there's an application for a Belvidere parade permit for the Special Olympics athlete parade. Could I have a motion, please? Motion by Alderman Fleury, second by Alderman Snow. Anybody have any questions, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And we have a Belvidere Area Chamber of Commerce street closure request for Buchanan Street Markets. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Fleury. Questions? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. And we have a motion for Belvidere Area Chamber of Commerce street closure request for the trick-or-treat event. Motion by Alderman Fleury, second by Alderwoman Moho. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And a Belvidere Area Chamber of Commerce street closure request for Hometown Christmas. Motion by Alderman Albertini, second by Alderwoman Moho. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to other. A, we have a Habitat for Humanity waiving the bidding and zoning fees for eleven-fifteen Garfield Avenue. Can I get a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderwoman Moho, second by Alderman Albertini. Need discussion, questions? Alderwoman Frank?
Yeah, I Googled it today to see what the house looked like, because I was unfamiliar with it. And you can't see it because of the trees, but it shows a big, huge hole in the front yard. You know, like, it looks like it's like a pool or something like that. But, and it said that somebody's living there. Is that true?
Kip, do you want to address that? Because they're seeking permits, right?
The house was demoed back in 2021. For whatever reason, we're bringing the waiving of the building permit fees and zoning fees for the construction of a new house. So, at this time, it's a vacant lot. Not unless it's underground.
We do have a representative here from Habitat.
Good evening. Henry Rupay. I'm a thirty-two-year resident of Belvidere and twenty-eight years in business here. And actually, I've been doing Habitat for Humanity with various affiliates for about thirty-six years. Yes, this was before the city council a few years back, when we acquired this house. It was given to us. If you walked anywhere along the backside and pulled away some boards, you could crawl into the basement where the foundation had completely crumbled. I wouldn't have wanted to do that, but you could have. So, yes, that house was taken down through some generous donations. So, we got that done cost-effectively, and you guys had waived some fees back then. I'm led to understand that perhaps the fees for building were also waived back then by that ordinance, but we had anticipated building almost right away, not really realizing how badly the pandemic and some other things would affect us. But we're ready to go this year, and so, we want to be back here before you just asking for those fees to be waived going forward as we put a new house on the property. There is an existing garage there, so I don't know if that's part of what anybody's seeing. But the GIS map shows the house still, the one that you pull up online, so...
Does, does waiving these fees also waive the water and sewer, or will they come back for that?
No, it'll also waive the water and sewer, because it was an existing structure already. So, they basically receive credit for that service and both services and stuff. So, there wouldn't be no fees.
If the city incurs costs, we pay those.
Okay. Alderwoman Gramkowski?
Thank you. So, by waiving the fees, you're still going to get the proper permits, and everything's going to be inspected, correct?
Correct.
Anybody else? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
And then, moving on to B, our water and sewer rate review. Director Anderson?
Thank you, Alderwoman. Memo in your packet. It's the same memo that we talked about at our budget retreat regarding where we're at with water and sewer, and the deficits in both of those funds and the need to adjust rates. At this time, I would recommend the rate increase in the amount of fifteen cents per hundred cubic feet in the water. That would be effective April first, 2024. The new rate of a dollar seventy-two per hundred cubic feet represents a nine-point-six increase, and the average monthly bill would increase a dollar twenty or about four cents per day.
Could I have a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderwoman Moho, second. Second by Alderman McGee. Questions, comments, discussion on this? Alderwoman Gramkowski?
Thank you. So, I'm just curious. So, we're going to do the, well, we might do this, but did we not forecast for this years ago that this was going to happen?
We look at, we look at review rates on an annual basis. Last time we did a water rate increase was, I think, 2010 was the last time we did a water rate increase. So, based on projections that we're seeing, that's what the recommendations are at this time to get us into a positive cash flow once again.
And then, when do you see a next increase? How many years are, can't you forecast that?
Well, based on the, based on the memo, I'm recommending water to be a two-step increase during this, over this, this current, this upcoming fiscal year. And then, we'll, again, we review on an annual basis through the budget process and see where things are at. We've been fortunate enough, like I said, to forego any rate increases since 2010. So, in that respect, we'd hope to be able to do that going forward as well.
Alderman Snow?
So, does this also would reflect the fact that we're putting in the new well, as well, the cost associated with that every life? The drilling of the well gets reimbursed, but there's a lot of stuff that goes along with it that's not reimbursed.
That's up, to be decided yet. We made an application to IEPA for the new well eleven for both the drilling and the facility. They requested back to us that we make two separate applications. So, we've done the first one. Fortunately, the drilling of it is going to be all covered by the state. But then, the facility construction itself, which is probably anywhere from three to four million dollars, that's yet to be decided on what kind of participation we're going to get from the state. Based on that participation, will be an additional recommendation in the future for an increase to cover that cost, because through the low-interest loan program, you basically have to pass a rate increase to cover that payment.
I guess with the deficit of two-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand, if we look at this yearly, I'm kind of surprised. Did we just forego it last year that we decided to ignore a deficit that was accumulating?
We've been able to forego those and those deficits, but again, it's got to the point now that we will need to do the rate increase to cover it.
Anybody else?
And to assist the city attorneys, he has a draft appropriate ordinance. What is the motion that's on the floor right now?
The motion is to increase the water rate by fifteen cents a hundred cubic feet effective April first, 2024. So, you're going to go from a dollar fifty-seven to a dollar seventy-two.
So, we're not worrying about the one effective August one yet?
Not yet. The only reason why we're bringing up Phase One is, that's for the Phase One and get it in place so that we can get it out for the April bills.
So, this vote is only for Phase One. The rest will be brought back?
Yes, it'll be brought back in the, in time, in its far timely fashion to get them in place by the recommended start date. And at those times, too, we can also do the projections and look at where we're at currently with the water rates and so forth and see where it's at. But it's to the point that, right now, that I'm confident that these two rate increases will need to be done.
Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. I was a nay. Motion passes.
Second part of the memo, then, is on the sanitary sewer side. The sanitary deficit projected is three-hundred-and-six-thousand dollars. I would recommend, overall, it's a three-step increase on the sewer rate to overcome the projected deficit and the required increase for repayment of the IEPA wastewater facilities loan project. At this time, I would recommend the step one of twenty cents per hundred cubic feet, which would be effective May first, 2024. The new rate of two dollars and ninety-six cents per hundred cubic feet represents a seven-point-two increase, and the average monthly bill would increase a dollar sixty or five cents per day. And just a point of reference, as we talked about at the retreat, the average bill in our region for water and sewer is seventy-five dollars and forty-eight cents, and currently, the Belvidere's bill is forty-one dollars and twelve cents.
So, do we have a motion for that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Stevens, second. Second by Alderman McGee. Questions, comments, discussion?
And I can add, last year, during last year's budget, the sanitary sewer, we did one rate increase last year. I had proposed a two-step increase with the second step coming, based on the completion of our 2018 treatment plant loan project. That project is still ongoing, has not been completed. That's why it's recommended for a three-step increase this time around to still accommodate that. Once that's done, right now, it's projected that project will be done hopefully by around the June first. So, I should know by the middle of summer, then, what the repayment schedule's going to be to the state and how much they're going to forgive off the loan, and know what our balance due over the twenty-year, what our twenty-year payments will look like.
So, Brent, with this, with this increase, step one for the water, and then the step one for the sanitary sewer, the monthly bill would increase about two dollars and eighty cents per resident?
Correct.
Alderman Snow?
So, just for clarity, because I had this broach to me recently, was when we talk about, for instance, when we did the tax levy and we increased it six-plus percent, that has nothing to do with funding the sewer and water. It only does the general fund, and the general fund doesn't really touch the sewer and water. They run as separate entities, and funding-wise, they're like their own little municipality in that regard. That's their own little levy. When we make these increases, that's their little levy increase, per se.
If you want to look at it that way, that's correct. They are proprietary funds, only to be used for water and sewer. We are mandated by the state that we can't be a cash cow, if you will. We can't just generate the revenues, generate the revenues. We basically have to cover the expenses. And in this case, that's what we've been doing for many, many years, and we'll continue to do so. Depending on how things go, if we get back in the road reconstruction program on a regular basis, as in the past, and we do start doing some more replacements with water and sewer lines, you'll be probably seeing some additional increases in order to cover those, those capital outlays for those replacement programs. We're doing, as you know, we've got the grant now for doing the lead and copper survey, and first phase of that is get that assessment done. Once that assessment's done, then we'll come up, we'll have to come up with a plan to replace the services, and that could include going on the private properties and how that's going to play out as well. So, that may have impacts on our rate system as well.
Alderman Albertini?
I'd just like to thank Alderman Snow for clearing that up. I was a little foggy myself on that.
Okay, thank you. So, this motion is also just for the first step in this, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right, moving on. We have our electric aggregation discussion. Who gets the floor on that? Alderman Brarrington?
Thanks so much. I just asked this to be placed on the agenda again, because I was receiving so many calls and questions about it. I just figured everybody could tune in tonight for some clarification, if we could do that.
I can run with that. Sorry to see that one of the gentleman actually left a few minutes ago. So, electrical aggregation is nothing new. In fact, it was established by the state legislature in 2010, when it first explicitly gave municipalities the ability to go out to bid, basically, for their constituents to try and get the cheapest possible electrical rates for their residences. And this is not to be confused with another form of aggregation we do for our own uses. This is for our residents, and that's what's at issue, because they're getting some letters. In 2012, pursuant to the statute, the city of Belvidere went to referendum. And the referendum was specifically to ask whether we should do an opt-out aggregation program. The reason why that was done is to get the cheapest rates possible. Again, that was one of the two ways it was set up at the state level. And one of the reasons why the city did that point was, under the advice of our consultants, the way to get the best rates for the citizens was on an opt-out basis. But the city went to a referendum to determine whether or not we should do that. And that referendum came back in the positive, that yes, the citizens of Belvidere, after the referendum, supported adopting the ordinance, establishing electrical aggregation on an opt-out basis. So, that's where the opt-out basis came from. And pursuant to that original ordinance, there's been subsequent ordinances, but all along, we have, from time to time, gone to bid, usually every two or three years, whatever the contract term was, to get the newest, best aggregation rates. And one of the ways we do that is not the city going to bid, but we are part of a large group represented by an organization called NYMEC, where several municipalities, and actually, it's into dozens, go out to bid at the same time, and all of the electric suppliers will bid on the programs. And over many years, we save significant money compared to the COMED rates. In the last bidding process, COMED has sharpened their pencils so much that the NYMEC rates, or the rates that we got from the bids, were basically the same as the COMED rates. And so, MC squared came back with a proposal where they agreed to match the COMED rates for the term of the contract. No matter what the COMED rates are, that's what they're going to charge. So, it doesn't matter whether it's COMED or with MC squared, you're paying the same rates. MC squared's bills show up on the COMED bill. All you see is a little change and a little item at the bottom of the bill that says who's actually providing the electricity, but nothing actually changes on delivery, quality of energy, anything like that. In exchange, under the contract, MC squared gave a civic contribution to the city on an annual basis of a dollar amount. I can't remember what the dollar amount is. Hundred-and-twenty thousand. So, the reason for these letters going out, actually, when we signed the contract with MC squared, virtually, everybody in the city got one of these letters. Subsequent to that, on an annual basis, MC squared has the ability to do two things. Number one, when a new resident moves into the city of Belvidere and establishes a new account, they're automatically put onto the COMED billing cycle. And so, once a year, COMED gives information to MC squared and says, okay, these are the new accounts. MC squared can then send a letter in saying, okay, you're actually on MC squared, because it's an opt-out basis. If you don't want to be switched, MC squared, opt out. If you don't want to be switched to MC Squared, opt out. The other way it happens is, one of the reasons why MC Squared was able to make the proposal was they realized that, and I don't know the finances of it, but certain residential accounts are more valuable to them than other residential accounts. Once a year, ComEd gives the utilization rates to MC Squared. And they can look and say, Mr. Adrela's account now, it wasn't financially worthwhile for us to have him in the past. It is now, so we're going to bring him into the MC Squared sphere under our contract, but send him out the opt-out notice. So essentially, if you're already with MC Squared, you're never going to get that letter. And that's why only some residents get them and some residents don't. If you were with ComEd and not with MC Squared, because that's just the way it started two years ago, and they suddenly decide that, well, actually, that account's worthwhile, then you'll get that letter. If you've opted out in the past, you'll never get that letter again because you've opted out and they're going to not take you. So essentially what happened was, and this happened last year, they looked at the accounts, they found some new accounts probably that people had moved into town, and they found a couple, three accounts or a little more that said, oh, you know what? These accounts are not worthwhile to us, so we're going to take them out of the MC Squared platform and send out the opt-out letter. So that's why various people got those letters. We are under contract with them through the next fall. That contract's up, at which time we can bid again and make a determination whether we want to continue the program, not continue the program. Our recommendation is go to bid, and if the bids come out great, and we can save people money, we consider doing it. But that's where we're at right now, and that's why those letters went out.
Alderman Flurry?
Thank you. So in the letter that the citizens received, it says that it just price-matched ComEd rate for a six-month rate. But you're saying it's forever, or I mean, because I think that's where the confusion is with some of the citizens. I mean, I was confused myself when I got the letter because, you know, I've been to some of these meetings and it's still kind of fuzzy to me. But it says everything the same, it's just where the money's coming from. But, you know, here it specifically says it's only a six-month rate. Then they could increase it, and then you can't opt out, or what's the?
No, they can never be higher than the ComEd rate. Now, in six months, the contract will be over, in which case we'll have to bid again. But they cannot go above the ComEd rates period during the term of this contract.
Okay, so it just says six months because that's when our city contract has not so much that they can kind of bait and switch you?
Well, and that's when ComEd can actually go to the Commerce Commission and seek rate increases as well.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Albertini?
Thank you. If, are we required to have a certain amount of citizens using this in Belvedere for this to be profitable, I guess, to them? I mean, there must be a way they're getting the $120,000 to pay us, just advertisement?
No, no, they're making money out, just like ComEd would.
Okay.
But they're matching the ComEd rates.
The other question I have is, you say in the fall, we're going to vote on this again. Is this something we can opt out of, or what are we voting on in the fall?
When this contract comes close to expiration, NYMEC, which is the organization I talked about a little earlier, will approach the mayor and say, are you going to go to bid again? And at that point, we choose to go to bid. And if the bids come back and we don't like any of them, we can certainly eliminate the program at that point. Frankly, it's always been worthwhile to have the program in the past. This last contract obviously didn't save the citizens very much money, although it did provide a source of income for the city. So theoretically, it offsets potentially increases elsewhere, other places. But yeah, so you can eliminate the program if you want to at the termination of the contract.
Okay, my other question is being they are being competitive with ComEd and selling the electric instead of ComEd. When ComEd goes for a rate increase, are they justifying their rate increase ever on the fact that they're they're being dinged into by MC Squared?
No, it's all between them and the Commerce Commission.
Well, I mean, if they're losing money, they're losing money, obviously, ComEd. If MC Squared is getting the electric fee?
One, no. One of the reasons why you actually saw aggregation come about in the first place was, one, the deregulation of the electric industry by the state a decade and a half, two decades ago. At that point, ComEd had sought to actually get out of the generator business, and they only wanted to be the transmission conduit. They didn't want to sell electricity anymore. And I don't know if that's still their game plan or not, but they were actually looking to get out of the generation business altogether at one point.
So this would never affect the rate increase request by ComEd then?
Shouldn't.
Okay, thank you.
So that was my question, does this kind of keep ComEd in line? Because if ComEd raises its rates and we're going with this MC Squared at a lower rate, then more people would go with the MC Squared, and ComEd would then obviously lose money, right? So it kind of keeps them honest? Or is MC Squared always just going to be ComEd's rate regardless?
No, again, there'll be a new set of bids come through if we like to go to bid again with NYMEC in the next six months or so. And at that point, everybody will bid. And then you determine at that point if they're going to be, whose rate's the cheapest? And nobody was cheaper than ComEd last round, which is why we went with MC Squared. But that was the whole purpose for deregulation in the first place, was to get rid of monopolized electricity generation and force competition to try and drive down rates or at least slow down the increase.
Well, if you look at your bill, the usage doesn't compare in cost to the delivery fee. So that's where ComEd's making all their money anyway. And MC Squared doesn't deliver it.
Nope.
So you're stuck with that regardless.
What I've never understood is how you know your kilowatt that you're burning is actually coming from who, but that's beside the point.
Right.
So that's hopefully answering any of the questions that you have. If there's any other questions, let me know now or give me a call, you know, in your convenience. But essentially, we are under contract right now, and that opt-out program was established after a referendum in 2012.
Alderman Snow?
So it should be noted that when this first aggregation stuff came out, citizens in general did see savings
Oh, yeah.
from it. But for whatever reason, like Attorney Adrela said, ComEd decided to sharpen their pencil and be more competitive. So that kind of waned that issue, so. It's kind of a crapshoot in that regard, so.
And I guess for people listening, interesting, I did note that I had some correspondence, which I've now closed my computer, from NYMEC. They actually have us look over those letters before they go out. So we knew they were going out, and they haven't really changed substantially in the last, I don't know how many years. And they go out annually. So for whatever reason, this one went to some bank, and obviously it garnered a lot of interest. But this has been going on every year for the last 14 years, 12 years at least.
Anybody else?
I almost felt left out until Mr. Adrela explained the fact that if you didn't have a change, you weren't going to get the letter because, like, I didn't get one. It's just alphabetical, I'm but Snow, it's going to be at the tail end of the mailing.
Anybody else? Alderman Brarrington?
No, that'll do it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Finance and personnel unfinished business, we have none. Finance and personnel new business, we have a finance department update from Ms. Hanson.
Thank you, Alderwoman Freeman. Actually, the one update I had pertained to the Medicaid information that I shared during Chief Shadell's update, so I have nothing else at this time.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Director Hanson? Seeing none. And then we have the fiscal year '25 general fund budget presentation and discussion. We could take a brief intermission here for about five minutes, if you like.
Thank you.
Or if the committee likes, we could table this and hold it over until the March 11th meeting?
Correct, as Ben suggested, we hold over till March 11th, which is the next committee meeting so Mayor Morris could be present at that time. So it is completely up to you if we go through it tonight and bring it back at that time, or we just wait until March 11th to go through the budget.
Second, second to do it tonight?
You got a motion to table or postpone it?
Do they have the motion to postpone Superstate?
Motion to postpone till March 11th. Motion by Alderwoman Moho, second by Alderwoman Frank. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll bring that back on the 11th when the mayor is here. And could I get a motion to adjourn? Alderman Snow, second by Alderwoman Frank. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.